This meeting is being recorded.
The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on January 12th, as well as a posting on the city's website. Mr. Clerk, can I have a roll call for tonight's meeting?
Council members Briggs Jones.
Present.
Councilman Davis.
Present.
Councilman Hockaday.
Present.
Councilman McKenna.
Present.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom. See that she's present with a thumbs up. Vice President McCray.
Present.
That's the president good.
Present.
You have all members present in a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I'm going to need a motion for the approval of the minutes, of course, that those minutes would have been from our combined session on February 15th. So is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second, anybody? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. We'll move to discussion items. And tonight we have a special guest with us. A presentation will be given by him from the New Jersey Institute for Social Justice, and that is none other than Mr. Jean Pierre. I don't want to mispronounce your last name, would that be Brutus? Mr. Brutus, thank you for joining us this evening. You're on mute. You have the floor at this time.
Thank you so much for having me, Councilman Good. Thank you for having me on behalf of the institute, Mayor MAP, other city council members as well, and the City of Plainfield. Thank you so much for having me on behalf of the Institute for Social Justice. So allow me to say a few words in support of this resolution, Bill A 938 S 386, establishing a reparations task force in New Jersey. As the council president said noted, my name is Jean Pierre Brutus. I'm a senior counsel at the New Jersey Institute for Social Justice located Newark, New Jersey. The institute's cutting-edge racial and social justice advocacy seeks to empower people of color by building reparative systems that create wealth, transform justice, and harness democratic power from the ground up in New Jersey. I would like to note that as the Plainfield City Council contemplates this resolution, so far Trenton, Newark, Essex County, and Montclair have already passed resolutions in support of this important legislation. So I want to give you all a number to think, consider. Three hundred thousand. That is a difference between the median net wealth of white families in New Jersey and the median net wealth of black families according to Making the Two New Jerseys One, closing three hundred thousand dollar racial wealth gap in New Jersey. An institute report authored by my colleague Laura Sullivan that was recently released. According to the institute's research, the median household wealth of white families in New Jersey is three hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred, compared to just seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars for black and Latino families respectively. For individuals, the median net wealth of white individuals is a hundred three thousand five hundred for, and compared to four thousand nine hundred and twenty-three hundred for black and Latino people. As my colleague noted, the U.S. has a major racial wealth gap problem. New Jersey has a racial wealth gap disaster. And the COVID-19 pandemic has only exacerbated the pre-16 cracks of structural racism in our state's foundation. Cracks that have resulted in New Jersey having some of the worst racial disparities in the country. COVID-19 was the leading cause of death of black people in New Jersey in 2020. These cracks have resulted in our black children attending schools in the sixth most segregated education system in America. To be sure, these cracks were not created overnight. We can trace these cracks back to the origins of New Jersey as a colony and its deep involvement in the institution of slavery. A reparations task force is needed in New Jersey. Many people are surprised to learn that even though a northern state, New Jersey has deep roots in the institution of slavery. It has even been called the slave state of the north. New Jersey's history of slavery and the generations of structural racism that followed are directly tied to vast racial disparities today, which are some of the worst in the country. Slavery shaped New Jersey economically, politically, legally, and culturally. From its conception as a colony in the early 17th century, it incentivized slavery. Colony fashioned a race-based system of distributing land that encouraged slavery. White settling families in New Jersey were given a hundred and fifty acres of land, and upwards of an additional hundred fifty acres of land for each enslaved person they owned. As time passed into the mid-18th century, slavery became the colony's primary form of labor in rural areas. It produced a grain surplus that went to the West Indies to feed enslaved Africans on sugar plantations. To ossify the condition of slavery, in 1704, New Jersey instituted a series of slave codes over the 18th century, which barred enslaved Africans from owning land, subjected them to punishment without trial. Those codes also imposed a curfew, limiting the number of enslaved people who congregate after 9:00 P.M. without the permission of their master, and subject them to corporal punishment because of fears of insurrection. As the historian James G. Cantino has written, "The road to abolition in New Jersey was a ragged one." The 1776 New Jersey Constitution did not abolish or mention slavery. In 1798, New Jersey passed an act that made it much harder for black people to prove their freedom. By 1830, all the northern enslaved population, two-thirds of them lived in New Jersey. In 1821, thirty-six years before the infamous Dred Scott decision, in which Chief Justice Tenny found that black people had no rights, which a white man was bound to respect, New Jersey's highest court found in Gibbons versus Morse that quote, "All black men in contemplation of the law are prima facie slaves, and as such are entitled to be treated as such," end quote. New Jersey was the only northern state to support and enforce the Federal Feudal Slave Act of 1850. The act made it easier for white masters to recapture self-emancipated formerly enslaved people. It denied enslaved people the right of habeas corpus, trial by law, and the ability to testify, and resulted in the re-enslavement of many black people who had been in the north for years. Thus, it should come as no surprise that New Jersey was the last state in the north to abolish slavery. It adopted the Thirteenth Amendment only after it was ratified in the U.S. Constitution. Slavery was part and parcel of New Jersey society. New Jersey was a slave society. Or to put it another way, slavery was mainstream in New Jersey. It is time now to make reparations mainstream in New Jersey. The task force will gather experts from around the state to study New Jersey's often overlooked and deep involvement in slavery. Its aftermath, including Jim Crow, redlining, right, and the structural racism that has endured, that manifest in some of the worst racial disparities in the country, right? Let's not forget, let's not forget New Jersey's history of excluding black GIs who came back from World War II, who were involved in the campaign for the double V, victory abroad against fascism, and victory here at home against Jim Crow, and yet were denied participation in the GI Bill. Right? This task force will recommend strategic and achievable policies that invest in black communities. And crucially, right, at a time, at this current moment, when efforts are happening across the country to shut down conversations about slavery and racism, it will call for community meetings across the state so we can finally have a conversation about who we are as a state and how to repair the harm. Now I ask you, the Plainfield City Council, to join this fight. We, the institute, are part of a multi-faith, multiracial coalition called Say the Word that is spreading the call for reparations task force throughout New Jersey. We have mobilized thousands across the state. In support of these efforts, at a Juneteenth rally, New Jersey's own Lieutenant Governor said that the quote, "The conversation has to be about reparations," end quote. To put it simply, New Jersey cannot afford not to do this task force as a cost of racial disparities are a significant burden on this state. Please endorse a resolution supporting the reparations task force bill and help to make this task force bill mainstream in New Jersey. Good evening and thank you so much.
Mr. Brutus, thank you so much for that well-informed presentation. We appreciate you being with us tonight. At this time, council colleagues, do any of you have questions for Mr. Brutus on this evening? If so, feel free to ask him.
I'll make a comment.
Councilman Hockaday.
Yes, you know, I think it is long overdue for this type of analysis that, that this resolution contemplates. So I am going to be in support of this resolution. It's important to note that, you know, this isn't a resolution that passes reparations. It is something that supports getting the data put in the full force of the government to actually research the issue, to really understand the extent, you know, in dollars and human cost of the vestiges of slavery. We don't know that right now. We know it's a, it's a huge undertaking to even gather the full facts of this matter. But I appreciate how the institute is deliberate in first just ascertaining the facts, just trying to understand the human cost of the institution of slavery in a meaningful and deliberate way. I know the work of, of the institute and that it's taken many issues throughout the state most successful in addressing, and it's always been an approach that is, that is very studied and academic, as well as, you know, gathering actual data that means something and synthesizing that and building the case for whatever the issue has been. So I'm confident that, you know, that, that, that we'll learn a lot from this type of, this type of study, this type of analysis that, that hopefully the state gets behind. But I'm glad to see that this is before our body so that as, as a city, we know that many of our residents would, would, would be affected by whatever, whatever the result is here. So we want to make sure that, that the government is responsive to, you know, our citizens that, that would greatly benefit from from, from this analysis and this commission. So just wanted to speak my piece and let it be known that I support this.
Thank you, Councilman Hockaday. If I didn't know any better, I would think you were working alongside the institute there. We appreciate your comments. Well taken. Any other colleagues?
I, I just have one, one question. First of all, those, those data points and statistics and historical gateposts were sad and startling, quite honestly, for New Jersey. But just a question for you. You read off this, the municipalities, and I think one county, Essex County, that had voted in support of, of the resolution. How, how many and what municipalities have voted, taken up the vote and not voted for, if, if you happen to know that, and that's mainly out of curiosity?
True, Councilman, that's, that's a great question. I actually don't have the information. I'm not aware of. You know, it's a, not something I'm aware of. I, if I knew, I would, I would be honest and tell you, but I don't have the information, unfortunately, sorry. So I'm not aware if there have been any councils in New Jersey at any level that have taken up this vote and have been unable to pass a resolution support so far.
Is it, has this been only circulated to other councils in the last couple of sessions? January, February-ish?
Uh, actually, Trenton passed their resolution last year in 2021, in the beginning of 21, around Jan-, late January, early February. And, and Essex County passed their resolution last November. So this, there had been, you know, resolutions in support around for at least a little over a year now. So they're, they've been circulating.
Interesting to know. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other colleagues would like to ask a question at this time? If not, we will move on, and I would like to say again to Mr. Jean.
Mr. Council President.
Mr. Mayor, how are you? How are you, sir?
I am wonderful. You asked your colleagues for comments, but since there appear not to be any other comments, I just want to thank Jean Pierre for coming out and providing such a factually researched-based presentation. I can't imagine that anyone who is interested in reparative justice, anyone who is interested in repairing the disparities that has led to the gap in generational wealth, anyone in his or her right mind that cares about the human condition and what has happened to black and brown folks as a result of the institution of slavery. I know that there are some in the media who have been pushing for you not to support this resolution. But I also know that there are decent, fair-minded individuals all across the landscape and who know the harm that has been done by slavery and who know that the conditions in which we find ourselves in as a people are deeply rooted in the institution of slavery. And so I don't believe that I have to say much to convince you. I think you've already been convinced that reparations is something that this nation needs in order to heal all of the damage that has been done to us as a people here and abroad. The rape that occurred in Africa by stripping it of so many resources, humans as well as, you know, material resources. And so I know that you will do the right thing when you get to this resolution and that you will lead by example and show the world, show the state of New Jersey, that Plainfield stands firmly behind the need for reparative justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as I'm concerned, damage is done. There, there is no number, no monetary number that could repair the damage, but in my opinion, in my heart of hearts, this is a step in the right direction. So again, just like my other colleagues, Councilman Hockaday, I am in support of this resolution. And we thank you again for being with us on this evening and taking the time out to give us that presentation. That being said, have a great night.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Good night. So, uh, moving right along, we will be moving on to consideration of public hearing and second reading and final passage. Clerk, will you please read MC 2022 dash two title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements?
MC 2022 02 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of financial agreement with 115 through 157 East Second Street Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties identified as Block 316, lots 23 through 24. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on the ordinance is published in the Courier News on February 20th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. There aren't any. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted?
Council President, just a, a quick clarification point. I just wanted to clarify with the city clerk. I think he may have just misspoke. It's lots 22 to 24, right? Not 23 and 24?
Twenty-two through, through 24.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to, I believe there was a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? You need to hold on this. Uh, council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President McCray?
Yes.
Council President Good?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read MC 2022 dash three title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements?
MC 2022 03 is a Plainfield in the County of Union, authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 1014 South Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties identified on the city's tax map, tax map as Block 622, Lots 2, and identified in the city's tax record as 1008 through 1014 South Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on February 20th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Since we have none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call on MC 2022 dash three?
Can we get a motion in a second?
Oh, move.
Second. Move. Next. For maximum proceeding.
Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President McCray?
Yes.
Council President Good?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read 2022 dash four title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2022 04 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield in the County of Union, granting a tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 201 through 233 East Front Street Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties identified as Block 318, Lot 14, and identified as a city's tax records as 201 through 233 East Front Street. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier News on February 20th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this particular ordinance. Since we have none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President McCray?
Yes.
Council President Good?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
So, Clerk, can you please read MC 2022 dash five title and further certify that the ordinances have complied with the statutory publication requirements?
MC 2022 05 is an ordinance providing for the exterior and interior capital improvements to the library, including the replacement of the roof in and by the City of Plainfield in the County of Union, State of New Jersey, re-appropriating seventy-one thousand forty dollars and fifty-six cents in excess bond proceeds from the Bond Ordinance Number 1255, not needed for their original purpose to finance the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier News on February 20th, 2022.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. With there being none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Moved. Second.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President McCray?
Yes.
Council President Good?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Please read MC 2022 oh six title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with statutory publication requirements?
MC 2022 06 is an ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 1267, finally adopted by the City Council, the City of Plainfield in the County of Union, State of New Jersey, on May 13th, 2019, to amend the description of the improvements referred to in Section 3M therein. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier News on February 20th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. With there being none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Moved.
Okay.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law?
Moved. Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yeah.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President McCray?
Yes.
Council President Good?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2022 dash seven title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with the statutory publication requirements, please.
MC 2022 07, it's an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the Plainfield Avenue Educational District Redevelopment Plan dated January 20, 2022. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier News on February 20th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
Oh my God.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
May I have motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law? I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President McCray?
Yes.
And Council President Good?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2022 08 title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements, please.
Council President, if, if I may be heard on the next two?
Yes.
Yes, before the clerk reads this, this next ordinance and then, and the following ordinance, there's a recommendation from the administration that both of these items be tabled. They are on again this evening for first reading. There were significant amendments to both of them, which required us to go back to first reading, which we're doing this evening. So after the clerk reads the title and there's, they're moved and seconded, is my recommendation that there be a motion to table at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Mincella.
Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Clerk?
Point of order before we continue. Mr. Mincella, are we tabling them or are we removing them since they're going to be reintroduced?
The only means by which to remove them is, is to table at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
MC 2022 08, an ordinance to amend Chapter 16A dash 1 Vehicles and Traffic Schedule 1, No Parking, Time Limit of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1972. time limit of the municipal code of the city of Plainfield, New Jersey, nineteen seventy-two.
Okay, Mr. Clerk. Uh, uh, Mr. Minchello, would you please? So so.
Motion that we table this.
I would know first before we do that, we need a motion in a second and then a motion to table.
Okay, so I need a motion, Mr. Councilman McCray moved to have a second.
Second.
Okay, not any motion to table.
I move that we table this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, uh, do we need a roll call?
Voice vote would be fine, you can say.
Okay, move on, Mr. Clerk.
I'm I'm in favor.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, are there any opposed? Okay, so, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, MC twenty twenty-two zero-eight has been tabled, we move on to MC twenty-two zero-nine as an ordinance to amend chapter sixteen A two vehicles and traffic schedule two, no parking certain hours under the municipal code of the city of Plainfield, New Jersey, nineteen seventy-two. So you need a motion of second and a motion to table.
Move.
Second.
Alright.
Motion to table.
Is there a second? Okay. And it's been a second.
I'm in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries? I apologize. Moving along here, uh, we're moving to public comments. Limited to resolutions and motions and ordinances to be introduced on the first reading. Total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comment, limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized and you'll be unmuted. Once you have been unmuted, please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Again, each speaker will be given three minutes.
Yes. Yeah, Nancy P. V. R. eleven twenty-nine Myrtle Avenue. I appreciate your consideration of resolution R. one thirty-nine dash twenty-two, which is a resolution authorizing the dismissal and acceptance of a grant application to the National Park Service Battlefield Protection Program. If the city of Plainfield is successful in the award of the award of this grant, this would be an opportunity for the city to prepare for and participate in the upcoming upcoming sesquicentennial anniversary of the United States in two thousand and twenty-six. It would also be an opportunity for the city to take its place in the founding of the nation, correct errors and omission in history books and honor the contributions of African Americans and women who played a vital role in the Revolutionary War in the Plainfield area. Caesar would be given his place in history along with other African Americans. Caesar lived in between two worlds, enslaved, then freed, fought for the patriots, yet still lived in the unjust world. Stories such as Caesar's must be told so future generations understand the courage, fortitude, perseverance and perseverance and the complicated life of forgotten American hero. Caesar was mentioned among the first members of the Scotch Plains Baptist Church when it was formed in seventeen forty-seven, one year after the Drake House was built. Through research of wills and other documents, I have identified the names of at least twenty-four African Americans who were enslaved in the Plainfield area during the late seventeen hundreds and early eighteen hundred. The memory is that these ancestors need to be honored, and hopefully, if the city is successful with this grant award, then the names of the twenty-four or more enslaved people can be seen and honored. Part of the grant application process was the submission of letters of support. Over the weekend, I was able to get twenty letters from community groups and individuals throughout the city and beyond. A Drake descendant from the state of Washington and a Vermile descendant from the state of Texas have graciously sent letters of support for this grant application. Plainfield School System and two other private schools, the Library, Frontiers, Historic Districts, and two and two organizations from Navy and Communities have provided letters on behalf of this grant. There is great community support and interest for this grant application, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. P. War. Good evening, Ms. Trammell. You name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Karen Tramell. I live at nine thirty-nine Carnegie Avenue here in Plainfield, and I'm here to. Ordinance R. one twenty-three dash twenty-two, which is to reinstate the portion of South Second Street between Liberty Street and Plainfield Avenue, which was dedicated to my father, which was Reverend Donald Nichols Senior Boulevard. And I don't know what happened to the sign, but we've been petitioning it for it to be returned. I don't know if anybody knows anything about my father, but he worked tirelessly his entire life for the city of Plainfield, and I just want to read to you some of his bio, just in case some of you don't know. He was born at Plainfield, lifelong resident. He went to Plainfield High School, then he went to Che- Casey Jones Aronautical School. He served in Hawaii for for four years. He married my mother. He had four children. They owned a little local store here in Plainfield for many years. Later on in life, he went to school to become a minister. He worked in the Mount Olive Baptist Church tirelessly and endlessly right there on the corner of Liberty and Fer- Third. I lost my father in two thousand and fourteen, but I lost him also dedicated to this city. And that's not a bad thing, but I knew where his heart was. He started many programs here in Plainfield. I think my brother and sister and some of my children, church members are on. People knew him as a minister that would also go to the churches. Other members of other churches would come and say, you know, Reverend Nichols came and saw me in the hospital, and my own pastor didn't see me. He loved Plainfield. And getting emotional about this, but I just want you to consider, and thank you for considering, putting the sign back up to honor his memory.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Tramell. We appreciate your comments. I did not know your father personally, but I've heard nothing but great things about him. And as far as I'm concerned, his legacy will always live on, not so much for the work that he's done, but through his family as well. So we thank you. Are there any more comments from the floor? There being none, make a motion that we close public comments.
I'm moved.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries? Are there any questions pertaining to resolutions R. one nineteen through twenty-two? I'm sorry, one nineteen dash twenty-two through R. one twenty-three dash twenty-two. If there aren't any questions, may I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, will you please proceed with the reading of the remaining resolutions, please?
Resolution one twenty-four twenty-two endorsing the enactment of Assembly Bill A. nine three eight S. three eight six in New Jersey Reparations Task Force.
Are there any questions? I don't believe we we have any questions with that awesome presentation that we had earlier, but I do need a motion.
Mister, before we move on to our motion, Mr. City Clerk, can you just clarify for the public that this motion is correct and does represent the city of Plainfield? Because I know there was an article this weekend that spoke to something else. So can you just clarify for the members of the public here that this resolution is corrected?
Uh, yes, sure. This resolution is corrected. Correctly says the city of Plainfield and not erroneously as the city of North. So that was that was corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. I still need a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, the motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution one twenty-five twenty-two granting advice and consent to the appointment of Gail Jones to the Plainfield Shade Tree Commission.
Are there any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution one twenty-six twenty-two ceremonially designating a portion of Plainfield Avenue from West Second Street to West Fifth Street as Parliament Funkadelic Way.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, I believe there's something else to add to that?
Yes, the administration would like to amend this resolution from Plainfield Avenue from Front Street to West to West Fifth Street. So it's not going to be Second Street, it's going to go to Front Street, Front Street to West Fifth Street.
I move. Is there a second?
Second.
Are you moving the amendment?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Now, Mr. Clerk, do we need to?
Need to adopt it as amended, so a motion to adopt.
Motion to it.
Second.
All in favor? Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Okay, I just want to know what the word ceremonial means in that in that context.
It it means that there's no post office change with the actual name. You know, just the ceremonial name of Funkadelic Way, Parliament Funkadelic Way would be placed uh, on top of the street sign, I believe, but it will not be legally changed to that street.
Same as honorary, right?
Correct.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
So it's been moved in second, uh, and we it's been moved in second also that for the amendment, correct, Mr. Clerk?
If if people place that on their mailings, will they get delivered there?
You have to bring Nancy P. War back. No, it will not be. It will not.
They would need to keep the the mailing address that they've always used.
Correct.
This is ceremonial only.
Correct.
That's why I asked the clerk.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk? Do we move to R. one twenty-seven or are we?
You need a roll call on one twenty-six.
Okay, and okay, okay.
Or a voice vote.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
That is unanimous, the resolution has been adopted. Resolution one twenty-seven twenty-two, authorizing the renewal of a contract with Rising Blue Cross.
Are there any questions for one twenty-seven twenty-two? If not, can we have a motion, please?
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries.
Resolution one twenty-eight twenty-two authorizing settlement in the matter of Aaron Spivey versus the city of Plainfield.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries for one twenty-eight twenty-two. Mr. Clerk?
One twenty-nine twenty-two authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Plainfield and Claims Resolution Corp.
Are there any questions?
Council President, can I motion to vote as a group for R. one twenty-nine dash twenty-two to R. one thirty-four dash twenty-two?
Is there a second for that?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
We are now on one thirty-five.
Yes, we are.
Resolution authorizing approval to enter into a professional services contract with the Rogers Group, resolution one thirty-five twenty-two.
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to vote on R. one thirty-five dash twenty-two through R. one thirty-seven dash twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, motions carry. We are now at one thirty-eight, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution one thirty-eight twenty-two authorizing a First Amendment to an assignment of redevelopment and land disposition agreement with TD Plus Partners.
Are there any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution.
Council President, on this resolution, I would like, yes.
Which one, which one?
One thirty-nine, resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-two. I'd like to have someone motion to correct it to be a hundred and fifty thousand versus a hundred thousand for the grant application.
I'll move.
Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Now, do with that being amended, do we have to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So with that amendment, okay, so I need a second. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? One thirty-nine dash twenty-two is approved.
Council President motion to vote on R. one forty dash twenty-two through R. one forty-one dash twenty-two?
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, I believe we're on one forty-three dash twenty-two.
Council President motion to vote on R. one forty-two dash twenty-two through R. one forty-five dash twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? Those motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
It was one forty-one to one.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Now, we're moving to the introduction of ordinance on the first reading. We now come to ordinance on first reading. Clerk, will you please read MC twenty twenty-two dash ten by its title?
Ordinance MC twenty twenty-two dash ten is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield in the County of Union, authorizing an amendment to Plainfield City Code Section seventeen colon nine twenty-four A Cannabis Related Businesses Subsection A License Requirements Paragraph Three Evidence of City Support.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
I'm moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Clerk, may I have a may I have a roll call, please?
Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna. Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read MC twenty twenty-two dash eleven?
MC twenty twenty-two dash eleven is an ordinance to exceed the municipal but but budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap.
Are there any questions from the council? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on its first reading.
I'm moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call on MC twenty twenty-two eleven, council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Let's read MC twenty twenty-two dash twelve.
MC twenty twenty-two dash twelve is a capital ordinance providing for various capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the city of Plainfield. M C twenty-twenty-two dash twelve is a capital ordinance providing for various capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, New Jersey, and appropriating five hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred twenty dollars thereof, two hundred thirty-seven thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents from general capital reserves from the U C I A funds, and three hundred thirty-seven thousand four dollars and twenty-two cents from general capital fund balance.
Council colleagues, do you have any questions? I'm entertaining a motion to adopt this ordinance on the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Briggs-Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
Kenna.
Yes.
Mills-Rantzen.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
We now have M C twenty-twenty-two dash thirteen.
M C twenty-twenty-two dash thirteen is an ordinance to amend Chapter sixteen A one Vehicles Traffic Schedule one, no parking time limit of the municipal code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, nineteen seventy-two.
Are there any questions?
Yes, more of a comment. So, um, I just want to clarify for the public who reads the ordinance, this is not saying no parking Monday through Thursday or no parking Tuesday through Friday, but instead it's saying no parking on Mondays and Thursdays and no parkings on Tuesdays and Fridays. So just by looking at it, it could look a little confusing to members of the public who are reading it, but it's just alternate side of the street parking pretty much. That was it.
I'm entertaining a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Briggs-Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills-Rantzen.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Mr. Clerk, we have M C twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen.
M C twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen is an ordinance to amend Chapter sixteen A two Vehicles and Traffic Schedule two, no parking certain hours under the municipal code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, nineteen seventy-two.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes. Um, on this. On this list, I see McKinley Place and it says on the west side, there's no parking. There's already no parking on McKinley Place. Is that just, is that the same side that there's already no parking on?
Yes, it's the one side. But this is, yes, one side of McKinley Place. It was just with group with the other streets that were.
Okay, but it was already, it's still the same side where there was already no parking.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question. This is also want to be on just on a trial basis at first, right? With this alternate street parking?
Well, the, definitely. Councilwoman, based, based on this wouldn't right here, with it's like they're twenty-eight feet, so twenty-eight feet and above would be alternate side of the street parking on most streets like this. Okay, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Fridays, etc., because of the width, and that's why this was done this way.
Okay, good.
I think, I think to answer the Councilwoman Briggs-Jones, the question is, it's not temporary, and if we wanted to change it, we'd have to do an ordinance to reverse it. If for whatever reason we wanted to.
Director Dabney, do you want to respond to that or?
Yes, what he's making is what would happen, and you want to talk to me, Councilman, I would refer to elaborate on everything with you, with the streets, why this was done this way? Okay, at your convenience.
Um, well, that really wasn't, but really my question was, um, I just wanted to know, this definitely going to be permanent, because I'm actually really for this. I'm, I'm, I'm gung ho about this, I'm, because and, and it's, this is, this is a good thing. This is a very good thing.
For street sweeping as well, but again, with street sweeping, snow plowing, garbage pickup, any emergency service vehicles getting through fire trucks, etc., so it works for everyone, eight to eleven is the hours that we would do the sweeping, etc., so people mostly at work during that time. So we inconvenience everybody at times, much, the hours between eight AM and eleven AM.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing also, is because it, it could produce revenue for the city also as well, and it's, and with P M U A, when they come in those early hours, you know, when they come and get that garbage, it'll speed up the time for them also, so it'd definitely be, uh, this is very a huge undertaking logistically. We consider this, this is a real, this is a big deal. So I'm, I'm definitely for this.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Briggs-Jones, and I concur with her because, uh, I guess this would be the epitome of easy access, easy access to leaves, garbage, and so forth. Uh, I, I trust that it will be strongly enforced, as she also stated about revenue. So that being said, uh, are there any more questions? If not, I'm entertaining a motion to adopt this ordinance on the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call on M C twenty-twenty-two fourteen, Councilmembers Briggs-Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills-Rantzen.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Mr. Clerk, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen is in your hands.
M C twenty-twenty-two fifteen is an ordinance amending the fee schedule of fines for illegally parked vehicles pursuant to plainfield section sixteen, colon five dash one.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Can we just get clarity on which vehicles these apply to, because just, uh, on first glance, it looks like it's all vehicles, but when you go read the actual code, it's actually talking about specific vehicles. So just for the members of the public to know, uh, who these fees would apply to.
Uh, that is a good question. Uh, Director Dabney, would you be answering that, or would the, uh, Director Abney be answering that?
Just, just first, I'm hearing about it, so.
I, I can, I can handle that, Council President, if you'd like.
Okay, go right ahead.
So it's any illegally parked vehicle. So there's a, there's a specific ordinance which spells out all of the, uh, violations, uh, for illegally parked vehicles. The fines are set in a separate, uh, section. This particular, we have now taken those fines and doubled them. So any illegally parked vehicle under the local ordinance, not on state statute, but if it's a local ordinance of violation for illegally parked vehicles, the fines are now doubled.
Okay, well, I have a different question then, because I thought it was only for commercial vehicles, but is this for all illegally parked vehicles?
My understanding is for all illegally parked vehicles.
Okay. So I think my concern is that we're raising, we're almost doubling fees for illegally parked vehicles while we are still in a pandemic and people are still recovering from that pandemic. So that would be my only concern with this. Like, I understand, uh, that we have to generate revenue, uh, but my concern is just who is being affected by this and how does this affect people who want to come and, uh, patron businesses downtown, or people who want to come and do business at City Hall, and for some reason they're two minutes late and now they have a seventy-dollar ticket. So my.
I don't know if that applies to meters though, does it? That's a good question.
So my only concern is that.
No, not a lot of meters, no.
Not meters, no.
No, not meters.
Not meters, no.
Oh, so.
Somebody parking in a towaway zone or a no parking zone or.
Bus stop, handicaps.
Blocking a driveway.
I was gonna jump, yes. Always zones.
Go ahead.
Um, yellow curbs, towaway zones, things of that nature, bus stop. It, it puts us more in line with the, the fees for state statutes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if I may also add, and someone, please correct me if I'm wrong, from what conversations that I've had, uh, this has been an ongoing issue even prior to the pandemic. So there really, really is no wrong or good time for this to be done. The fact remains that it, it should be done.
Council President, you're correct, and there, our fees have not been adjusted in, in quite some time. Um, previous fine was thirty-eight dollars. Um, so we, that was only time to adjust the fee as Director Dabney said to be more in line, uh, with, with state fines and also.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh, is there any more questions from the council? If not, I'm entertaining a motion to adopt this ordinance on its first reading.
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. Clerk, please get a roll call.
Councilmembers Briggs-Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills-Rantzen.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
Unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Mr. Clerk, bond twelve fifty-seven?
Bond twelve fifty-seven is a bond ordinance providing for the purpose, purpose, uh, purchase of equipment and improvements to the police building for the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, State of New Jersey, reappropriating a hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars sixty-four cents in excess bonds and or no proceeds from various bond ordinances not needed for their original purpose to finance their cost.
Are there any questions, Council colleagues? I'm entertaining a motion at this time.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Briggs-Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills-Rantzen.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Council, Council President, if I could just address the clerk briefly.
Councilman, Hockaday, you have the floor.
Yes, um, if you can go back to M C twenty-twenty-two dash ten, I intend, I intend to abstain. If you could just change my vote to abstention. That's it, Mr. Clerk, Council President, thank you.
Okay, you abstained on twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two dash ten.
Thank you, Council colleagues, for your participation, and we've gotten to the portion of our meeting where we're at general comments, and a total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each speaker will be allocated five minutes and five minutes only. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized, and you will be unmuted. Once you have been unmuted, please give your name and address for the record. Again, each speaker will be given five minutes. The floor is now open. I see hands. Ms. Hickerson, good evening. Your name and address for the record? You're, uh, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
That was a mistake by the hand.
That's okay. Good evening. Okay, so.
No, she meant she made a mistake raising her hand.
Okay, Marie, uh, you have the floor. Your name and address, please?
Yes, hi, it's Maria and sorry, welcome to the afternoon. And, um, just a couple of things, they're all related. One has to do with the ongoing combined agenda of voting session. I and I've spoken to a number of other residents, really feel that it's time to go back to having an agenda setting session that we in between where residents could either research or think about what was being presented. Where on Zoom, it's not going to be a great inconvenience. Um, it just seems that we get no time to review things, and I'm sure you all want to encourage voter participation, but it, it just, we need that time and we don't have it. Um, it also gives people who might be interested in a subject the opportunity to at least find out about it. So I greatly urge return to a two-session council where we do agenda setting with voting following a week later. Flowing from that, I go into communication with council. I have found, and again, other residents have noted too, we don't always get return from council, um, via email or phone. I get you're busy, and I also get that you may hear the same thing over and over. The repeat questions might be handled through either a town hall or Facebook post or something that there could be discussion, but individual comments, it would be really nice to at least get recognition back from you. And yes, I received your email. And if the hidden message is, I don't want to respond to it. That's one thing, but I don't know, some of you have noticed, but a lot of email is going into spam these days from many providers, so it will be important to check spam too. Um, the third thing, and again, this is communication and data. It's the deer kill. We went through another two months of just terrible karma in our parks and a municipal land. We do not live in the deep woods. I guarantee you will have complaints about deer yet again. It's going to happen. I am requesting that one or two council people contact, uh, me or a colleague so that we can make a presentation yet again to the council on the reality of this crossbow pill that goes on in our parks. This year, although policies are set, the county has the right to change those policies. And that happened this year, so whereas the distance from a structure was a hundred fifty feet, it was weighed in one incident in Cedar Park. So anyone could stand on Parkside Road and watch a hunter in a tree with a crossbow. And it's just a terrible, violent, awful thing. And I don't care how good a hunter made, and he or she is. There is no such thing as instant kill. A knife through.
Council President.
Um, Ms. Maria, we thank you for your comments. It's duly noted. Thank you so much for, for calling in today. Um, I just had one co, I just had one comment. It might be a good idea, uh, if, uh, council colleagues would, uh, oh, check your spam folder. Uh, sometimes, uh, emails do go to spam and they don't go to probably you, the proper inbox, so just in, in, in relation to what she just said, so I encourage you to check your spam folder, so that way, uh, you can respond accordingly to any emails, of course, that comes to your email. That being said, uh, as we begin to close, I appreciate your patience tonight. It has been a very, very challenging day for me and my family. So I, um, I appreciate you guys having the patience that you've had this evening. Uh, Councilman McCray?
Can you close public comments first?
Yes, oh, yeah, I will. Uh, uh, motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Uh, second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Public comment is officially closed. Thank you, Vice President McCray. Like being said. uh, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting for?
Before we get here. Um, Mr. Rancello? Uh, do you want to talk about, uh, that ordinance we just passed, how it's for commercial vehicles?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman, uh, earlier in the meeting, I spoke to the fact that it applied to all, uh, fines, uh, that were not covered by state statute, does in fact cover commercial violations. Um, if, I don't know if that affected anyone's vote this evening, and they would like to amend their vote, um, but when I spoke, I said it, it covered more fines than it did, it was purely commercial fines.
I think.
Doesn't affect my vote, uh, I don't know.
Thank you, Council President.
Uh, the, uh, Director Abney, uh, this will be enforced?
Sorry, definitely will.
A proactive approach, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Now, how about that motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's just say we're adjourned, thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.